Looks like we have quorum, but we'll call roll shortly. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting of September 28th, 2022 to order. Our first item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, roll call.
Alder Allen appears to be absent at this point. Alder Aratafrada?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you. Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Herbst?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Strassman is absent with excuse. Alder Udell?
Here.
Thank you. And Alder Wheeler?
Here.
Thank you. You do have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, approval of minutes, minutes of the August 24th, 2022, draft minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, I'll place the motion before us to a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. The ayes carry. I have Alder Aratafrada asking a question.
No, I think she was just voting aye, but you can confirm that with just with her hands.
Yes. Alder Aratafrada, did you have a question or were you just acknowledging?
I want to raise my hand from now on because I am, you know, if when we are voting is going to say I am voting for yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Moving on then to item five, public appearances for non-agenda items. I don't believe we have any registered at this point in time. No, we do not. Thank you, Scott. Then we'll move on to item six, agenda items. This evening is Town of Madison update and City Administrator Chad Brecklin will be presenting. Just a reminder, this is the only topic this evening and we did that purposely so we would give you all, council, an opportunity to ask the questions that you would like to ask and that we wouldn't be pressured into any time restrictions. So we have two hours or we can, of course, make it much shorter than that. So I will turn the floor over to City Administrator Chad Brecklin.
Thank you, Alder Udell, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to provide an update on the Town of Madison attachment. Hard to believe that what started 20 years ago for many of us, or at least a few of us here in the city that thought we might not actually see it happen, we're down to less than 45 days before the attachment takes place. And from a format perspective tonight, what I hope to do is just share some additional opening information with the council and then turn it over to the department heads who were able to make this meeting tonight to allow them to share notable information about the issues or tasks or those things that have been completed and those tasks that may remain. I've asked them to keep it at a high level because as you recall from earlier in the year, there were over 225 individual tasks and issues that we were all working our way through. So I don't want to bog them down or you down with all of that minutia, so they will definitely look to keep that at a high level. And then they will remain available for a period of time after they've given their brief presentation for any questions that you may have related specifically to their department. And then they are free to go after they've presented for their department if they would like or if they want to hang out and enjoy the remaining evening with the fine company that we all present, then they're able to do that as well. So and then after they're complete, I will take over again and present for the department heads who were unable to be here this evening and share information respective to each of those departments and again be available for any questions that I can certainly answer related to their department specifically. I can take back questions that I'm unable to answer and get answers for the council. And then we can also have a period of time where we can just talk generally about the town attachment and any questions that you may have. From an opening perspective, soon after I started in this role last year in July, we implemented an internal work group consisting of several department heads who are going to take the lead and coordinate our Town of Madison attachment activities. I do want to recognize those group members because clearly without their assistance and abilities, we wouldn't be in the place that we are right now. And that is rather prepared, I might add, for this attachment to come forward. So those members are Tracy Oldenburg, Amy Mercer, Lisa Sanford, Mike Zimmerman, Misty Dodge, and Valerie Zissman. I do again want to thank those employees for stepping up. They were all willing to volunteer to help out with this important task. I will briefly talk about our outreach and communications activities and then turn it over to department heads. And I also want to recognize Lisa Sanford and Jeremy Crosby as the two who have spearheaded our communications and outreach activities. I basically asked those two in early 2023 if they could put together a plan and take the lead on it, and both of them enthusiastically said yes, I'll be happy to do that. So some of the information that I can share, and I've got more available, but I'll cover again the highlights in regards to outreach and communication that has been done. I know you're all aware of the outreach events that have happened this summer in Southdale Park. We had four events beginning in June, one each month, and I know that most, if not all of the Alders here on council had attended one or more of those events as well. We've done some mailers out to every property owner and resident in town in the Town of Madison on a couple of occasions. One early on was to announce a public information meeting that was held, if I recall correctly, in April at the Quartz Insurance Building there off of Rimrock Road. And then we also recently sent out a mailer to all property owners in regards to rezoning that's taking place and then also shared information related to tax bill or property tax rates, refuse and recycling, and assessing information as a few highlights. Lisa and others have also visited apartment buildings and spent time onsite at 14 out of the 16 apartment buildings or complexes that are located within the Southdale neighborhood and have made over 140 connections with residents of those complexes. Homeowners received a personal visit by a member of the city, largely Lisa or Jeremy or some other member of our city hall or city staff. They received a welcome packet with information related to the town attachment and other information that a homeowner, and when I say a homeowner, I'm also referring to a condo owner as well, received the same information as a single-family homeowner did. The businesses also received several onsite visits, not only from Lisa and her team, but also Mike Zimmerman and Joyce Frye and the Economic Development Team. There was an informational meeting, if you recall, at the Delta Beer Lab back in May that was specifically for the businesses. There's also an upcoming portion of our Pittsburgh Chamber meeting in October that will be available for town businesses to participate in as well. Other activities that have been done through the outreach, onsite visits with the food pantry distribution that takes place regularly in the neighborhood, the pop-up library has been there on several occasions throughout the summer. The police department's community, I'm sorry, neighborhood officer has visited with residents in the neighborhood many times. And of course, our website has a Town of Madison attachment specific component to it. Social media has been utilized to reach residents and, as I mentioned, mailings have been utilized also, and Fact TV has been also utilized in order to help reach our Southdale future residents. I think that covers the highlights of all of those outreach activities. Does anyone have any specific questions regarding those outreach activities before I turn things over to our department heads?
What type of feedback did you get from the businesses or the residents as far as their concerns or whatever, if you can answer that?
Yeah, so some concerns are related to, you know, if I'm a property owner, what will my taxes look like? Big question from some of the residents is what is refuse and recycling like in Pittsburgh? When am I going to get my trash bin? And, you know, just general feelings, obviously, early on, there was a lot of concern expressed about the metro transit route reconfiguration and clearly we called a special meeting after hearing those initial concerns and obviously council was deeply involved in working to address the concerns presented by residents. But I think it's been evident through the outreach that has been conducted by Lisa, Jeremy, and others that there's definitely a sense of appreciation for the time and investment that staff has put into this outreach plan over the course of the summer in particular. And I think by and large, they've seen some really good things happen. I know Lisa herself has helped spread mulch in Southdale Park. Our Parks Department has replaced soccer nets and done mowing and some tree trimming over there already. And I think that the town residents have appreciated the attention that they've been given to this point, so. Any other questions? All right, I'll start with the two department representatives who are in council chambers this evening. So Joe, you want to step up and talk about anything from the fire department perspective?
Good evening. So part of the preparation for the Town of Madison was to identify response initiatives initially, trying to get a good handle on the type of call volume that we are going to see. And we're looking at anywhere from about 100 additional alarm activations to 900 additional EMS incidents in that area a year. And it's typical with the density that we're talking about and the type of residents that we are seeing, primarily multifamily is what we're serving. We also needed to get a handle on what kind of protection was being offered immediately. So initially, when this attachment was talked about, we had talked about annexation about 20 years ago, there was this thought that the Pittsburgh Fire Department would take over for the Town of Madison Fire Department. And what ended up happening is the Town of Madison was having a tough time staffing their department, so they ended up contracting with the City of Madison. And that happened about two years ago, maybe not quite two years, but they started that process of providing service. Where I tried to get in front of that is I tried to address the fact that if that's going to be our service area anyway, why don't we start identifying those things that we need to do and get ourselves involved on a more immediate basis? But because of the fact that there was a contract established and there was money that exchanged between the two municipalities, that was off the table. And I was pretty much told that by the City of Madison Fire Chief at the time. So we took advantage of this time to try to identify other things, to include inspections and the infrastructure that we need to have in place, like key secure boxes. We currently use the Knox brand key secure that allows us to maintain keys onsite without having to manage keys for all of the properties within the city. But that has to be keyed to the City of Pittsburgh. So we've already made the arrangements to have those keyways replaced. That'll happen on November 1st. We will be in possession of those keyways this month already. And the intent is to work with the City of Madison to be able to make that transition. They need to be able to get into the box because their keyway is in there right now. We need to exchange the keyway and then it'll be keyed toward the City of Pittsburgh specification. We also wanted to make sure that whatever inspections were being conducted within that area were taken care of before the end of the year, at least to be able to identify those things that needed to be accomplished if they weren't accomplished already by the City of Madison. We were given reassurance that the City of Madison will have those inspections done before they vacate the response area within the time that's been specified, which is November 1st. A couple of other things that you need to be aware of, we're already working with the Public Safety Communication Center to make sure that when a 911 call comes in, it is coded appropriately and the intended units are dispatched. So that's already being done through computer-rated dispatch. We've made those arrangements. We've had the meetings with Dane County. And with respect to that, in not trying to oversimplify it, a matter of flipping a switch, if you will, on November 1st, that area will become ours and when those calls come in, the appropriate units will be dispatched. 911 will be the same. People will call 911, it'll go to the dispatch center, they will dispatch the closest, most appropriate unit based on the authority having jurisdiction. So one of the reasons we built Station 3 in the area that it is built is based on the fact that we were growing into that area of the Town of Madison. So the good news is, is a lot of the infrastructure that we needed was accounted for well in advance. Those things were put into place and our response to that area is going to be better than what they were used to with the Town of Madison Fire Department, based on the location of assets. So that's just a quick 30,000-foot view of what we've been doing from a fire department standpoint. I think the best thing that I can provide you right now is the reassurance that between us and Fitchroona EMS, we're going to be ready for response. We have the appropriate personnel and equipment in place to be able to initiate those calls. What we will be able to do by this time next year is give you a much better impression of how response has been affected and the number of calls that we actually are seeing versus the one that we're predicting. So that gives us something to report on and give you an idea of how well we're able to hold up the response aspect.
Yes, Roy. I might be getting ahead of myself with inspection, but I know last, this month, you presented a housing and talked about sort of the condition of different buildings. Any sense of like what that looks like in the town and what that's going to mean in terms of like, I guess, hazards and potential for fire?
So I think where we're seeing the trend develop in that area, it's very much a working class community. So a lot of what we're going to be seeing is after 5 o'clock. Those that live in that area don't typically, they're not in that area at the time, they're probably at their jobs or a number of other different responsibilities that they have. But we do see an uptick of responses after, let's say, 5 o'clock. When the lights go down or when it starts getting dark outside is also when we see a slight uptick in calls in that area. So we do anticipate that we will see increased call volume. We do anticipate that it's going to be happening when most people are in their residence.
Do we know what kind of? Oh, sorry. Do we know what kind of condition like the housing stock is in, if it's like kind of more, because I just remember, you know, when we talked about like some of the homes and apartments in Pittsburgh being more of a hazard than others because they're older. Is that the case in the town?
There's definitely an aged stock of residential buildings in that area. We don't see a lot of them being protected by sprinklers. So that just speaks to the time in which they were built. So yeah, I mean, there's certain things that we are aware of. Another thing that we're practicing with already, we're having our crews drive through those neighborhoods because there are some streets that don't necessarily lend themselves to the best larger vehicle traffic. So we're already trying to figure out what it looks like from a response aspect to be able to facilitate larger vehicle movement and the movement of water. We're also working with the water utility to get a good sampling of our water flow in the area, so how much we can get out of hydrant in any given area and whether that needs to be supplemented and supported.
Alder Allen, go ahead.
I got a list of things.
All right.
You kind of touched on it a little bit. My understanding, just from the work that I do and being in a number of those buildings, is I don't think there's a single residential unit that's sprinkled. Would that align with what you're?
Our current day observations, yes.
Yeah, I don't think even the condos are sprinkled.
Yeah, and whether some have been retrofitted or not, that we've been trying to get in as many as possible, but we're just not observing very many fire suppression-protected buildings.
So if you, when you look back at the history that the town has had up there, have, has there been a history of severe structure fires? I mean, it doesn't, I don't believe any of the buildings have had to be taken down because of a fire.
I know of, I know of three fires, two that are fairly recent and one that was a little bit longer ago, that was before my time. Those are the three that I'm aware of, but there have been two in that area since the City of Madison took over.
And were those extinguished quickly enough that?
I believe both of them experienced significant loss.
Okay. A couple of weeks ago, and I should have called right away, but a couple of weeks ago, I saw one of our Fitchroona ambulances in that neighborhood. Is your, would your expectation have been that that would have just been because it was a severe call and that was the closest paramedic ambulance, or do you think it would have been mutual aid?
It was likely one of those two things. It's either, seriously, you're on the correct point, is if it was a high life hazard situation and they needed dispatched the closest, most appropriate unit, that would have come from Station 3. And we anticipated that Station 3 was going to start seeing more call volume based on the proximity. But yeah, you're absolutely correct in the other regard, that if, let's say, Madison did not have a med unit that was close by or they were transporting or on a different incident and Fitchroona was the closest, they are going to just grab those units that are in service and available for immediate response.
And you kind of touched on the hydrant issue a little bit. I wanted to come back to that. Do you, do we know what the town has been doing as far as hydrant maintenance over the last, say, 10 years?
So in the last 10, I can't answer. I can tell you the last seven, five to seven, not much. We do know that there's concern for infrastructure and one of the reasons why the City of Pittsburgh has been taking those types of things into consideration. And I know that water mains and sewers and all of that are things that we have to keep an eye on, based on the fact that, yes, they do require additional maintenance. And I don't want to speak on behalf of engineering or the Department of Public Works, but I do know that there's concern to be able to evaluate that and make sure that the needed maintenance is done.
I guess where I was headed was a slightly different direction, and that is, do you anticipate when we get in there and actually start doing the proper maintenance, that we're going to have expenses for replacing hydrants and possibly water main replacements and other things like that that may come along with?
From what I know of infrastructure maintenance is the fact that the state of Wisconsin, well, actually, the United States, we do a really good job of putting infrastructure in and from a maintenance standpoint, it takes budgeting that requires a little bit of forethought. And so from that aspect, I'm positive that our Department of Public Works is going to find things that need to be repaired. But the, that's going to be over the course of a lifetime, too. I mean, there's always something that has to be done
Right.
with the infrastructure, and I don't see the Town of Madison as being any different.
Okay. I think the city's approach as a whole, Jay, is that we're going to expect there's going to be things that either we didn't expect would be needing to be addressed from an infrastructure repair replacement standpoint, or that we know there's going to be stuff that just is going to need to be done. So we are prepping for that, and one of the things that I know was talked about last night is the payment that the city is making to the City of Pittsburgh for the town hall and, you know, the recommendation from staff is to set aside that payment for just that sort of thing, those expenses that we know are going to come up that we're just going to have to deal with.
So from a fire department standpoint, we obviously don't know what we don't know, but we can plan for worst-case scenario, and that's if the water system is not as reliable as we're used to in the City of Pittsburgh. We do have water tenders that we will put into place and be able to move water into that area. And that's what we're sort of planning on right now. We are working with Department of Public Works to get GPMs on each of the hydrants or whatever ones have been tested, just to give us an idea of what we can expect for a water flow in that area and if it needs to be supplemented.
Well, so the water up there is currently provided by the City of Madison, right?
It is.
But I heard a rumbling not too long ago that there may be a suspicion that the pipes underground might be a little too small to provide adequate flow in case, you know, there's a big event that happens.
So it speaks to how water systems are set up, the grid associated with the water system and whether it even has a grid.
Right.
So one of the things that we look at is those hydrants that are on a grid versus a dead-end hydrant. We know the dead-end hydrants are going to create restriction as far as water flow, especially if we're tapped in someplace else, which then speaks to the ability to augment the system with supplemental water supply. So the good news is that Pittsburgh is also, has a significant rural community, so we already have that infrastructure that we can use to supplement versus right now, the City of Madison is protecting that area and they don't have a single tender. So.
Really? Well, okay. Also, what calls are you anticipating over there, other than just fire calls? What other kinds of things are you anticipating are going to increase, like lift assists and just, you know, regular medical calls?
Yep.
Because we usually dispatch an engine even if it's, you know, even if there's no fire.
Yeah, there's methods that we use in order to supplement the crews that are on scene for medical calls. Putting two people in an ambulance and expecting them to lift a patient in Wisconsin, you know, the typical Wisconsin patient isn't 100 pounds, right? So we anticipate that things like lifting assistance is going to be needed, addressing things like moving equipment so that we can not only go in, help with the initial assessment, do the initial treatment, but then get the patient into the ambulance and to the hospital within the timely, well, timeframe, right? So we want to make sure we do that as quickly as possible and get the person to the hospital as quickly as possible. So yes, we have those things that we will be working with. We know that Rimrock is becoming more popular, especially with Terrevesse coming in, there's more vehicle traffic. We can anticipate that we're going to see accidents in the area. Anytime when we have development, we anticipate things like technical rescue, I mean, just a simple lateral trench extended to, building extends another degree of risk that needs to be addressed. And we're already on top of that, too, with our tech rescue response. So there's things that we anticipate. The senior housing concept is not going away anywhere real soon and the Town of Madison has its own senior living complexes that we will likely be visiting on a more frequent basis. So those are typical to what we see in the City of Pittsburgh. We're just adding population and increasing our exposure to calls. And the typical response, what we see on a day-in, day-out basis, is just going to go up in numbers.
And then just one more question. There's, in addition to the residential, which, you know, we've been hearing a lot about, there's also a significant commercial and industrial component up there. In your understanding of the current usages of those buildings, is there anything up there that's going to be unusual, that you might require additional equipment or additional supplies for that we don't currently stock?
Nothing other than the fact that there are some specialized business practices that may have to be addressed. Anytime we go into a business, we're looking at things like their material safety data sheets, just to see if there's a component or a product that they use, raw material that they use, raw materials that they use, that we might need to address differently. Typically, when we do our inspections, we're also asking questions like that. Is there anything else that we need to be concerned about, so that we can prepare our firefighters to be able to address those things that may present as an anomaly? So, right now, we've got some larger buildings in the area. The Quartz Building is a larger building that we will want to tour. And then, there's other buildings, like the Exact Sciences Building, that are going to have specialized processes that we'll need to be aware of going into the facility. So, things like that are the things that we typically try to get in front of with pre-fire planning.
Great. That's all I had, for now.
For now. All right. Very good.
I'm always available.
Additional questions, discussion? Hearing none.
Thanks, Chief.
You're very welcome.
Deputy Chief Leahy.
My good friend.
Really good job, Joe.
On your microphone, boy.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Thank you, everybody. You're not going to stay for mine?
Oh.
No, that's all right. That's all right. That's okay. So, from a police department standpoint, we've been really involved in this process of trying to understand the town of Madison, some of the challenges that we're going to face as a police department, right from the very beginning of the year, through our discussions with the town of Madison, City of Madison Police Department, as well as Dane County Sheriff's Department, developing and understanding amongst the four agencies that the town of Madison was, the police department is going to suffer some staffing shortages, just due to officers leaving that department that weren't at the tail end of their careers, looking for any kind of severance package. So, the town of Madison entered into an agreement with Dane County Sheriff's Department right from the beginning of the year. We were a partner in that agreement, although we were not named in that agreement, to assist for calls for service during certain portions of the day, in the event that the Dane County Sheriff's Department could not fulfill those calls for service through mutual aid agreements. So, our officers, not only at the beginning of this year, but in previous years, had been very familiar with the town of Madison, the population, the geography, the challenges in and around that neighborhood. We knew of a lot of the business owners, property managers, prior to the beginning of this year, which benefited us greatly. In addition to our cooperation with the town of Madison, City of Madison, and Dane County, we also created an internal work group, from the police department's standpoint. That internal work group had several tasks that we were trying to fulfill. We were trying to get an understanding of the calls for service that we were going to face when the attachment started. There was a portion of the department that needed to understand fully and to get a better idea of what the town of Madison challenges were going to be from a calls-for-service standpoint. We added two officers this year, with the hope that both of those officers were going to eventually become neighborhood officers. However, we are currently eight, we have eight unfilled patrol positions right now, so that does create a bit of a challenge from a staffing perspective. However, all of our officers, as well as sergeant, have stepped up over the course of this summer and will continue to do so, and have worked well to fulfill the needs of our city, as well as future city of Pittsburgh. What we did find out from our call analysis and our coordination with the town of Madison is that calls for service would average right around 2,000 additional calls for service in the town of Madison. Many of those calls were disturbance calls, check property calls, very low-level calls within the town of Madison, not necessarily facing an extreme amount of violent calls in and around those, or needing extensive investigative needs for the town of Madison. We're also charged with allocating officers throughout the entire city. As we all know, the Southdale neighborhood is somewhat of an island on the far northeast side of our city now. Many of the calls for service drive our officers to specific areas within the city. Now, this creates another island off to the far east side of the city. So, one of the other jobs of the internal work group was to design new districts for the police department, in order to properly allocate officers throughout the city, and to allow for cooperation between the districts, allow for, if one particular district is busy, other officers can slide over to assist those particular districts. So, now we have, previously, the sides of the city were split, basically right down the middle. On Fishhattry Road, we had an east and a west district, and within those districts, we had basically a north and a south sector. Now, we have an east district, a north district, a central, and a west. So, the east district includes the new Southdale neighborhood. It's also a very large district that goes all the way down to M, starts double M, goes to basically Fishhattry Road. The north district is our north neighborhood, Leopold Post, those areas. Central is our Seminole Hills, McKee, all the way down to M, and our west is our Jamestown-Belmar neighborhood area of the city. Those hopefully will be able to provide us with better allocation of our officers and allow for better assistance throughout the city when the town of Madison attachment does occur. Another expectation of the internal work group was the compilation of stakeholders, and that really rested upon our neighborhood officer, Logan Brown, who started his position in June of this year, and has been working not only at the outreach events, but has also been working with property managers, business owners, to identify and to start the introduction. Unfortunately for him, excuse me, we didn't necessarily want him to get overly involved in the day-to-day operations in the Southdale District, because we currently do not have enforcement authority within that neighborhood, and we didn't want to start any kind of programs until we fully took over that particular area. So, Logan's been working diligently with property managers to identify their concerns from a quality-of-life standpoint, to identify our emergency contact information, and those types of topics, and will continue to work with our neighborhood stakeholders in the Southdale neighborhood once the attachment comes, begins. Beyond the internal work group, we've also been working with the City of Madison Police Department, as well as the town of Madison, to identify the transfer of police records between the two agencies. Luckily for the city of Madison, they share a records management system currently with the town of Madison, so they're able to have immediate access. Unfortunately, we do not, so we've been working, our IT staff has been working with the city of Madison IT staff to develop a way to pull, based on geography addresses, to pull all the necessary data from their database, provide us with that data, so we can access it from not only a situational awareness standpoint for officers, to understand previous calls for service, to understand dispositions of calls, but also from an open record standpoint, which our records team, our professional staff are going to have to handle once the attachment begins. We've also been working with the town of Madison to identify property that they currently have, based on their retention schedules, and to eventually take that property over. They have been working throughout the year to whittle that property down, based on state retentions laws, to get that to a manageable area where we're eventually able to take that property over. We're also internally doing a property room audit, in order to identify, to ensure that we have the adequate amount of space for that property when it does eventually come over. We're timing that with the city of Madison, in order to best provide the services to the community. Once we do have those records, and once we do have that property, we feel as if that we would be responsible for any open records requests or requests from the court at that point. So, we want to make sure that it is as timely as possible, and there's no confusion of who's going to be responsible for that at that particular time. We've also been presented with an MOU from the town of Madison recently, that we are currently evaluating, to begin taking over calls for service a week prior to the beginning of the attachment. The reasoning behind it is to ensure that the town of Madison officers and staff can clear up any, you know, reports that they're working on, or investigations they're working on, so that they're not, if they do go off and retire, and they're not, it minimizes the need for them to have an ongoing responsibility to any calls for service, or any reports, or investigations, from a court proceeding standpoint. It's, at some point, it's most likely going to happen for some of them, but they're just trying to minimize, when the clock strikes midnight on the 31st, that they won't have anything hanging over, once that begins. So, those are some of the things, from the police department's standpoint. Be happy to answer any questions.
Alder Allen, go ahead.
Just as a point of clarification, when you're talking about property...
Evidence.
Yeah, stuff that you've collected in the process of investigating.
Correct.
Okay. So, I have just a few questions. The shortage of officers we have right now, what do you think is the main reason for that?
Well, that's kind of a loaded question. I think some of the officers that, the shortage of officers that we currently have are due to retirements. When I say eight unfilled patrol positions, we're actually only down two officers within the police department. We have three that are currently in field training, and we have three that are currently at the academy.
I see.
Unfortunately, the academies, it's a good and a bad thing. From a timing perspective, for agencies, the 720 hours that they're required to be at the academy, and then the 16 weeks of field training, it's good from a information developing, skills developing, but it does take a very long time to get those officers out on the road. It usually takes up to a year if you have to have that person attend the academy. So, it does take a while. So, when I do say that we're eight unfilled patrol positions, two of them are actually not filled. They're vacancies. So, we're hoping to get three of the officers that are in training done by the end of October, so that's going to be helpful. And then, the three that are in the academy, one is graduating in October, so he'll be able to start field training in early October, and the other two will be graduating in December.
Great. What percentage of our current sworn officers, and I know you're not going to have an exact number, are bilingual in Spanish?
I would say that there are probably, of our 54 sworn, I would probably say five to seven of them are bilingual, and that's rough ballpark.
What do you think it would take to increase that percentage?
Well, I know the city has been working on an incentive for bilingual employees. I think it's going to take a multifaceted approach to encourage those that are coming into the police profession to apply, and, from a bilingual standpoint, whether it's our continued efforts with the Latino Youth Academy, to encourage Latino youth towards a career in law enforcement, or if it's just our own officers recruiting people that they interact with, whether it's relatives, whether it's people that they know in colleges or tech schools, and it's, from just a straight recruitment standpoint from the city, to at least enhance that knowledge base that we do have, this bilingual incentive, and hopefully that will attract more people with those skills.
I remember having this conversation multiple times with former Chief Blotter, and he basically said that when you get bilingual graduates from the academy, they're like gold, because there are so few of them as a percentage. And I realize that it may take additional financial incentive to attract people that have that skill set. Is there a route by which we could do some sort of training of our existing staff to at least learn some Spanish, so they're able to communicate? I mean, they're not going to need to explain how a fire hydrant system works in a city, but, you know, just to be able to communicate on a basic level?
Well, one of the things that we can do, and we currently are doing within the police department, is we do have language line assistance, where an officer is able to call up a telephone number to get a translator on the line to assist them with their call. We also have great partners within Dane County that we can call for mutual aid, to have a bilingual officer come out to assist officers on the call. So, it's not as if we're completely devoid of any assistance, but as far as basic law enforcement, Spanish, or some other language, as we all know, it's not as easy as just taking an eight-hour class.
Right.
But I don't think any of us would not encourage some, one of our officers, to explore that opportunity if they so choose.
Well, we could probably reach out to Centro Hispano, because I know they do some of that in town. Then, I had two other quick things for you. There have been some questions raised to me, and I've tried to allay these concerns, but stating it in a more public way would be helpful. There have been some concerns raised to me that the city of Pittsburgh may be a lot more aggressive in finding undocumented people and trying to deport them. What would the department's response to that be?
I think for years, the city of Pittsburgh, when it comes to any seeking, actively seeking out any undocumented individuals for the sole purpose of having them deported, would be a false narrative, from my perspective, not only from an officer or sergeant, but also as a deputy chief. We do not actively seek to get involved in the deportation of any undocumented individuals within our community. We are charged with enforcing the laws, and if they, those individuals, are undocumented, we do not get involved in those processes. We encourage them to contact their consulates during the arrest process. As the chief stated in the committee of the whole meeting last month, we are a partner with federal agencies, state agencies, that may be involved in that, and if there is a true safety concern, from their perspective, we will get involved to assist... a true safety concern from their perspective, we will get involved to assist them from a purely safety standpoint. However, we are not getting involved and actively participating in their investigations.
And then the last question is, we, so we have, we have a lot of, we have police officers that are out there charged with law enforcement, but not every call that comes into the police department is necessarily a law enforcement call. Sometimes there's other things, as you're well aware. So what other resources does the City of Pittsburgh have in handling something that maybe you're dealing with a suicidal person or some other type of need?
Sure. So several of our officers are CIT trained, as well as several of our officers are also peer support trained, which also assist our own internal officers with mental health concerns, stress-related concerns. So that in turn can be used by those officers on calls for service, whether it's mental health issues. As we all know, mental health concerns are some of our biggest drivers of calls for People in crisis are typically what we deal with. Now, they may, those individuals may not be clinically diagnosed with any mental health concerns, but that particular incident at that particular time can drive them to a point of crisis, and all of our officers are well aware of that. We also have not only, in addition to our training that we provide officers, but we also do have a half-time social worker working for the police department as well as with the senior center. And she has been excellent to work with from a police department standpoint, doing a lot of follow-up with domestic-related incidents, mental health-related incidents, those calls for service that we are frequently going to. She is usually stepping in to, I guess, give a much more deep dive into the causes of those calls for service. So our officers are much more limited on our responses to those calls.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Allen. Alder Wheeler, you had a question or questions? You have the floor.
Yeah, my questions were pretty much answered by Jay's question. I just wanted to know when the field training officers would come out and the ones at the academy. But with the issue of actively going after undocumented people, if I'm not mistaken, and please correct me or Chad, correct me, we don't even have access to that database. It's a totally separate database that we do not have access to as far as law enforcement. So the actively, you know, that whole thing that we actively go after people, I mean, we wouldn't even have the capability to even do that. So I hope that kind of calms the fears down a little bit.
Correct.
I just would add, just to supplement what Matt had said about some additional resources, there are also two civilian service employees within the police department that can also help with things like parking-related matters, animal calls, assist with traffic control and those sorts of things. And then in regards to the bilingual conversation, Mayor Richardson in his proposed budget has included a 50 cent per hour bilingual pay incentive for those city employees who are certified bilingual in Spanish, MONG, and American Sign Language. So that is one way we hope to help incentivize the additional workload that's often presented for folks who are bilingual.
Okay, very good. Additional questions for the chief? Turn it back over to Chad.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt and Joe. Matt will sign your overtime card. Wendy Rossen, our librarian, would you like to go?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. So outreach for us is really kind of up our alley already. The timing of the Town of Madison attachment is really good for us in that we hired an outreach librarian just this last spring. That was a position that we have had in the past. It was vacant during COVID, but now we have Mindamauer. I think many of you have probably met her at some events. She's been doing a great job. So we started doing pop-up libraries at Southdale Park over the summer, and they were very well-received. So I would say between like 10 and 25 kids every time we were there. A lot of the same kids coming, week after week. They had to have a little impromptu telling time lesson at the first one so that they would know when to come. She said sometimes when she drives the library van down the street, there are kids running after her. So they're super excited to see her when she gets there. So they're doing craft projects, they're doing some STEAM activities, some physical activities. They've got like the parachute, you know, that you remember from elementary school, that's still a big hit with kids. We try at outreach events, not so much to do library checkout as we would in the building because I think a lot of the folks that we're reaching have a hard time getting to the library. So bringing things back is kind of a, I guess, barrier we don't want in place. So mostly what we're doing is giving out free books, and the kids got together and came to me and asked if they could take three books this week and bring them back next week and trade them for other ones, and if they could take some for their brothers and their parents. So that's all been just going really well. And she says they're really good at bringing their books back. So they kind of taught themselves library lending without us even having to do it, which is great. A lot of Spanish speakers, a lot of kids that are, I think, translating for parents. I think there is room for some maybe adult literacy programming in that area. So that's something that we'll have to think about going forward. The fun in the park nights were also really well-received. We were able to send one of our bilingual youth services assistants along with those, and that was really helpful. Going forward, so we will obviously continue to do programming there. I think a lot of it will be focused in the summer when we do most of our outreach programming, but I know there is discussion about the shelter there. I would just say if we had a shelter where we could be indoors, we could probably do, you know, a lot more, maybe not in the dead of winter, but we could probably do more of the year outreach in that area. We're also thinking about maybe doing some kind of a little free library. So little free libraries are typically kind of a small box on a post. Let's take one, leave one. I'm thinking more of kind of a little book barn that would be a little bit bigger so that we could do adult and kids' books in English and in Spanish. I think the friends of the library might be interested in helping with that project or maybe maintaining that project, so that's something that we're looking to go forward. And I think we'll probably try to do, I know the holiday party that the city does, they're looking at doing some, maybe a few outreach events for that, and we're thinking of doing the same thing around the Halloween holiday. So that's kind of what we've been doing and what we anticipate going forward. It's been a really good response. We've been really happy with it. I think it is, was our best-attended outreach stop of the summer. So I think the residents are really happy to have some services there, and we're happy to provide them. So any questions for me?
Yes, Wendy, we do have a couple of questions. Alder Allen.
Yeah, first of all, I mentioned it last night, and I want to mention it again tonight. The change in atmosphere in Southdale from the outreach events that the city has been doing has just been tremendous. I mean, from times when I would walk over there and people would be like angry, people are settled now and they see that we're actually trying to do some things to help. So I wanted to extend to you and your staff, thanks for the work that's been done over there. It's been very good. What would be the plan moving forward for having continued outreach events like that next year, and not just in that neighborhood, but other neighborhoods of the city? And I don't want to give a long history of going back to the bookmobile because the bookmobile was really popular in Pittsburgh, and we lost that resource when we built the library. And so I know there's been some concern that the outreach hasn't met the demand that the bookmobile was filling, and I get the idea of, you know, you need to be able to return the books too. So what are your thoughts moving forward as far as those kinds of events?
So I think we're, I think this was kind of our first summer back, and you know, previously we focused a lot on the Leopold neighborhood. This was the first year that we were, we were at Leopold. Some of the time we were at Southdale, we were at Hugo James Town Park. So I feel like it was kind of just getting out there and kind of getting the residents to know that we were doing something. So my hope is that we see more response in the other neighborhoods going forward. I think there's also an option, if we had funding for it, the Dane County Library Service has a smaller bookmobile now called the Dream Bus. We did contract for them to come to Leopold School once a week when Liz Zindars was here doing outreach. That's something that we could consider. They do more of a traditional checkout. My concern there, though, is that you have to have a library card, and I think a lot of the kids that we saw, especially at Southdale, we didn't see parents. So we don't have a way to get them signed up for a library card with a, you know, a guarantor on the account. So I still think for now, probably giving away free books is the best way to go. So I'm hoping word of mouth is going to help us out, and I think kind of listening to hear what kind of programming people are wanting in the different areas.
Yes, Alder Aratafrada, go ahead.
Hi, Wendy. So one of the questions is, you mentioned that moving forward, you're planning to continue to have some activity in the area, especially now in wintertime. So have you considered looking at one of the apartment complexes if they have like a common area where you can do some activity? And then there are a couple of other non-for-profit organizations close by that maybe they have a common room that maybe, you know, you can, you know, you can do some activity and partner with them. I don't know.
Yes, yes. I know Mindamauer has been looking. Around to see kind of what spaces are available. Honestly, that's been one of the struggles that we've had with outreach since we started it, is finding an appropriate space that we can use. An apartment building, we can absolutely look into that. We have struggled in the past with them wanting unreasonable insurance requests if we're going to use their space. We had that, I think, problem with the fairways, and so we were limited by that. But absolutely, we're looking at different spaces in all the areas that we do outreach. That's one of our biggest challenges.
Additional questions? Alder Aratafrada, go ahead.
I know that this is a crazy idea, maybe, you know, because the library is located, you know, very far away from the Southdale neighborhood. So maybe considering the future, if we can do some activity where on Saturday morning and the afternoon, and maybe we can find like a location of transportation where we can go to Southdale, pick up the kids and the party, and bring it to the library for a couple of hours for an activity. I don't know.
Yeah, again, I think if we could work. Out the insurance concerns and the sort of parental permission concerns, I think that would be a great idea. We would love to do that.
All right, additional questions? Yes, Alden, Alden O, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's not technically going to be in Pittsburgh, but right across the street across from Rock is the Badger Rock Community Center, so that could be a potential site for outreach as well.
Yes, Mindamauer let me know about that a little while ago, so she's got her eye on that as well.
Okay, see, no further questions. I'll turn it back over to Chad, Chad Berkman.
Thank you, Wendy. Our city clerk, Tracy Oldenburg, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'll go next. Good evening, everybody. You know, just kind of jumping in on the last conversation, the Doxa Church might be a good location too for some outreach events as well. So the clerk's office, obviously the timing of the absorption of the Town of Madison was not good for the election standpoint based on ballots needing to be sent out by a certain time. So the clerk's department has spent a majority of our time trying to figure out how that's going to work with transferring voter records, people that are registered to vote, absentee ballot requests for the November election. So there was a lot of collaboration between the Town of Madison, the Wisconsin Election Commission on how that was all going to look. Deanna and the Planning Department and the Planning Director for the county all got together, tried to make up the wards based on the different districts and what a ward could actually be consistent of. And then that information was presented to the Elections Commission. Luckily, you know, we were kind of concerned that some of those records would have to be manually entered, where we would have to register all the people from the Town of Madison into the City of Pittsburgh manually, but the Elections Commission was able to transfer all those voter records over just overnight, so it was wonderful. So there was a lot of time involved with that, and of course, finding a fifth polling location to accommodate the Town of Madison. We had went out to look at a couple of different areas. There was thoughts of maybe the new fire station, but that seemed kind of far away. So we were able to partner with the Doxa Church. They were more than willing to help host elections for that area for the November election and moving forward, so we were lucky with that. We're also working on securing equipment to staff that location for the election that's coming up. We are in talks with purchasing the election equipment from the Town of Madison rather than buying brand-new. Their election equipment is in excellent condition, so it makes more sense just to purchase theirs rather than purchase something new. And then we're also training election inspectors to staff that location and chiefs as well. So a lot of our time has been spent with just concentrating on how people, their registration records are going to be transferred over absentee ballot requests, and getting people, you know, registered to vote, how they can find a way to register to vote, how they can register, where they vote. Lot of outreach was done with Lisa and Jeremy going out with their welcome packets. We did have some information in there, voting information in there. And the last outreach that we did with the town, we handed out some information as well. We partnered with the League of Women Voters, who were absolutely wonderful. I believe they said they registered about 13 people and gave out more information. They helped 18 people determine whether or not they were registered to vote or not. So that was great too. And then we handed out little flyers letting people know where their polling location is going to be. And last night, the council approved all the ordinances with Doxa Church being that fifth polling location. So those postcards will be going out the first week of, I'm sorry, the week of the 10th, October 10th. They'll be going out to all the residents out there in Southdale to let them know that that is their polling location. Our plan on Election Day is to have our bilingual staff member staff that location throughout the day to help people that need to register to vote overcome any type of language barrier that might exist. And then we're also going to be working with outreach on cut licensing. We'll put something out with the tax bills that go out. And then in late February, early March of next year, we'll be reaching out to the existing alcohol license holders out there and letting them know that, you know, they need to register now with the City of Pittsburgh, renew with the City of Pittsburgh. They don't need to renew in the middle of the year. You know, their license will just automatically carry over because they're absorbed by the city. And we've been working with the town as far as getting those records turned over to us as well. I know Renee did stop in this week, and she did turn over all the paper voter records that she had, so we have those in our secure vault. I think there's about 453 registered voters in the Town of Madison that we have absorbed and 43 absentee ballot requests. So, yeah, it's been a lot of concentration on the elections portion of this now, just based on the timing. We had to have all this figured out in time to get ballots out for the November election. So, yeah, so. Any questions?
Yes, Alder Allen, and then we have Alder Aratafrada.
Tracy, just one question, because you and I have talked a bit about this anyway, but is that, is the polling location in Southdale going to be only for Southdale residents, or would that extend to people in Terravessa also?
Sure, that's a great question. We didn't want to incorporate any other wards in District 3 to vote at that polling location just based on the timing of the November election, and we didn't want to create any type of confusion with that. But we are looking at incorporating another ward or possibly even two to vote at that location as well in 2023. I don't know if it'll happen. in 2023. I don't know if it'll happen for February or April, but you know, maybe we can get that all figured out by the fall of 2023 to encompass the 2024 elections.
So the the existing Fitchburg residents along Rimrock and Maloney Drive and Anderburg and those other streets over there, they'll still be voting at the community center?
That's correct. For November, that's correct.
I, Alder Allen, I'll just add Tracy and and I have been talking about potentially looking at how we may look at, if it's possible, splitting Ward 11 at Sine Road and then having voters to the east of Sine as well as then all or most of Ward 12 would vote up in the town in the Southdale neighborhood at Doxa Church. One of the main complicating factors to that is, one, the number of voters per ward, but then also the county supervisory districts. I think there's now a total of three different county supervisors as we, as you learned last night, with a couple of the parcels specifically needing their own wards in the town, no voters in those wards or residents in those wards. But that's certainly complicating our ability to really kind of shift the northeast corner of Fitchburg such as Terre Vessa and and to some extent uptown crossing into that particular neighborhood for for voting, but we are looking at it.
Alder Roda Frada, you had a question, go ahead.
Yes, Tracy. Question is, you mentioned that you're you're planning to send a postcard to the resident of the town. So they're going to be a registered resident to everyone?
Everyone, everyone. We have all the addresses that we have taken over from the town of Madison. So every every resident that is coming into the city will get a postcard.
Are you planning to send that in English and Spanish or?
There is Spanish language on there as well. Yep.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, turn it back over to Chad Berkman.
Thank you, Tracy. Public Works Director Bill Balky.
I'm here. Sorry about the delay. Yeah, Public Works, we're ready to start plowing roads this fall. We've got all our routes reassigned for the area. We're picking up about 3.18 miles of roadway. So all of those areas where we've got assigned for a new route. And then so we're ready to go with that. Same for the street sweeping. We're in the process of getting all the records, just as much as, you know, all the other departments are doing as well as far as record drawings for the the water, the sewer roads, building projects, stormwater and those projects. So we're getting all those. We're importing those into our databases and updating our GIS so that we can do what we need to do to help our community up there. For the most part, it's going to be pretty much business as usual for for the residents up there. We have done some outreach for refuse and recycling. We sent a letter regarding the the new service that they'll be receiving for the single-family residential. So they all received a letter. We're sending out a second letter with a more inclusive welcome packet to those 15 residents, single-family home residents that will detail out when their bins should be put out, when they're going to receive them, you know, things like that. So we're we're going to be doing that within the next two weeks, just to confirm that. Put some door hangers out there on everybody's door, plus the letter, letting them know that that's going to be taking place. One of the issues that has been brought up was what what kind of services are we going to be inheriting? Or what kind of infrastructure are we inheriting? And there are some roads up there that need to be reconstructed. Bryant Road in particular is just a total reconstruction road that needs to be done. That it's on Greenway, just north of Greenway Cross between there and the Beltline Frontage Road. That one needs to a reconstruction of that. And we're working to try to get that in the CIP for some future year. But for the most part, we've we've been in the in the town of Madison. We've inventoried all the streets. We know what kind of maintenance needs to be done. We're including some of those in our street resurfacing project next year under the ARPA funding that's provided to the city. So there'll be a portion of the roads over there that get resurfaced. And there's also some roads in that area that are going to get chip sealed and some new pavement marking. So the roads are in pretty good shape. There's there's nothing, there's a few that need some attention, but it's it's a small percentage of the whole. With regard to the the sewer system, right now, the town operates and maintains their sewer system within that area which drains into the the city of Madison. And the city of Fitchburg is going to be taking that service over, those utilities. So we will be maintaining those. And again, we're in the process of getting, you know, the records and the asphalt drawings for the condition of those roads or the sewers. So we'll be doing the locates for those in in coming up October 31st. If residents in that area, apartments, businesses, whoever has a problem with their sewer backup or sewer problem, they'll call the city of Fitchburg. The same for the the storm sewer. We're in the process of getting all those records and evaluating the the system as a whole. We are meeting with town officials to go through, you know, in detail to to find out where the issues are, if there's any flooding, sewer backups, issues like that in the near future. The the water system, though, is the city of Madison's Water Utility supplies the town of Madison with the water. And as such, they they maintain the water system as well. So the city or the the Madison Water Utility will be in charge of the the water mains, the fire hydrants, the services and then and the meters for for that system. Not to say that we don't have any input into the system. I'm sure if we address, if we have issues in the area that need to be addressed through public construction, we we can get those addressed with the Madison Water Utility. And, you know, we'll work through the system to get that done. But, you know, and we've got some roads under resurfacing. That's our priority, that we want to take a look at those first, see if there are any sewer issues, any water issues in that area, and then get those programmed in for next year for any replacements that need to be done so that we can anticipate, so we don't have to go back in and tear the road up if after we do the resurfacing. So, yeah, the if they have a water main break, they're going to be calling the city of Madison. So that's the one kind of hiccup in that area is they need to know who to call. If if there's flooding, call Fitchburg. If there's sewer backups, call Fitchburg. If there's water problems, call the city of Madison. So we're trying to get that information out there, and I'm sure we'll be working with finance when we get the utility bills out there, you know, with some information with that regard. That's pretty much the highlights. We we plow, we sweep, we we supply water sewer. And we are going to keep the residents informed, of course, of the transit as they can complete their study. They're they're still in the process of of doing their equity evaluation. And then they will determine where the placement of those stops are after that. They said it would probably be another couple of months before that's completed, so stay tuned for that.
All right, we have a number of questions. We'll start with Alder Allen, Alder Herbst, and then Alder Roda Frada.
Hey, Bill, just two questions. Do we, do we still, does the city of Madison still supply water to the residents that are on the other side of Rimrock Road? Or has that been put on cities, city of Fitchburg's system now?
The city of Fitchburg doesn't have a system up there.
Right.
I'm not sure which part of Rimrock you're referring to.
Well, it would be the, it would be the, what would that be? It would be the western side of Rimrock, I guess.
Sure. Yeah, those those areas over there, the city of Madison still supplies the water and we bill our our customers quarterly.
So have we, have we had any thoughts in the future now that we have a well in the area? Well, I mean, it's further south, but it would there be any thought of of putting making that part of the Fitchburg system at some point in the future? I I think if I remember when the Rimrock, when that Rimrock property, so that that property used to have its own system and that system collapsed like, I don't know, 20, 25 years ago. So we had to go into this agreement with the city of Madison because we didn't have a well over there. So that's on the city of Madison's system now, and I believe because that's also connected back to the other city of Madison property along the E-way, that that was looped. But I'm pretty sure that the Southdale neighborhood is not looped. So I guess the question is, is there any thought that we would extend water to that area and and create a loop in doing so?
My recollection is that there's quite a gap between our system and their system up there. And that's why we did, you know, take that over or allow that for the city of Madison. I'm just trying to bring up our map here of the area, but not having much luck on that.
Well, at the at the time it happened, we didn't have anything on the other side of Highway 14. So now that we've built infrastructure over there, it's closer, but it's, you know, it's still probably a mile away.
It is. It's, there is quite a bit of distance there and we would have to, yeah, a future CIP would be be in order, but I I don't foresee that right now.
Okay, I think that was the only question I wanted to ask, so.
Alder Herbst, you have the floor.
Bill, I I might have missed it, you know, Madison's supplying water and they're going to be maintaining the the mains and the hydrants. We're in charge of the sewer. How does the billing work? You know, will they, you know, because our our sewer billing is based on our water usage. Will we be sending them a sewer bill? Or, you know, will Madison be doing it? How how will that billing occur?
I believe the way it works right now is that the city of Madison takes the volume from the homes and then they bill us for the water and the sewer on that.
I I think on that question as well, Bill, Misty probably could step in as well. I'm not sure if she, well, there she is.
She was here and gone.
Yes, yes. Do you want to step in on the on the and weigh in on the question, Misty?
Yeah, so the, we have the same situation in other parts of the city too, so we'll use that same process. We already have an MOU with the city of Madison or for them to share data with us. But they have a meter at the property that will measure the volume of the water. They bill out the water and then they share that information with us and we bill out based on that usage data using our rates for sewer.
Very good. Thank you. Dave, does that answer your question? Okay. We have Alder Roda Frada next, and then we'll come over to you, Bill.
No, I think the same question that David asked was my question, how we are going to do the deal with the sewer. And Misty, so you mentioned that, okay, so the the residents, they're going to receive two, two bills, so they are not going to be confused.
Yeah, so they're, they're already used to getting two bills. The the more complicated part is how the billing for sewer and stormwater happens. And so we've been trying to get that information out. When we send out property tax bills this time, we're going to include this detail again. But they're already getting a water utility bill from the city of Madison monthly, and that's just going to continue. The weird thing is that the sewer and stormwater charge from the town is currently placed as a special charge on the tax bill. So they're going to get that special charge on this coming tax bill through October, and then they'll start getting quarterly Fitchburg utility bills after that.
Okay, Alder Maldonado, go ahead.
Yeah, is there some sort of like call forwarding system? Because I imagine if they're getting bills from Fitchburg, but still have to go to Madison for their water issues that, I don't know, Jay or Shannon or our city might be getting a call when it's really supposed to go to Madison. Is there like a process for being able to just get folks to the right hands when they maybe call the wrong place with an issue? That's a, I don't know if that's a bill question or customer service question, but.
Yeah, we we do have an on-call phone and we're versed on who does what. So if if we get a phone call in emergency like that, we know who to call and and we'll refer them or call them directly to to the to the right services.
All right, Alder Gerhart, go ahead.
Thanks. So I'm curious, do we know what the current utility rate, like stormwater utility rate and recycling rate is for the town of Madison? Because I assume that ours is higher than the town's. And are we, are they aware in the communications that we've sent about the the potential jump in rates?
We're working with Economic Development, Mike Zimmerman, to reach out to the commercial users of those properties to to relay the information. There is quite a significant jump, especially with the larger parcels that are fully paved like like Zimbrox, for instance, that will receive a bill that's significantly higher per quarter than they're they're getting annually now. So we are reaching out to them and we're we're, you know, like the top 10 businesses. We will be sending out an individual letter explaining the charges. We just didn't have time to do that by the time we got the the zoning letter that went out or everybody. But we'll be sending those letters out to explain how what their charges are and how it's how it's come about.
And then I, and maybe this question is going to be answered later, but I guess I also assume property taxes are going to go up quite significantly. Do do we have a plan for communicating that? Has that been communicated to people just so that they know that it's coming?
Yes. So through the different outreach meetings, we've talked about it, as well as on that zoning letter that was sent out recently. We included a chart on there that compared last year's town of Madison rate and the year before, and then compared it to Fitchburg this year or the year or last year, the year before. Because if you remember, the town of Madison arbitrarily lowered their property taxes last year by using all that fund balance. So we wanted to show that, yes, your taxes are going to go a lot up on this, just the local piece of it, of the tax bill. But it's going to go up a lot from last year to this coming year. But if you compare it to the year before, it's actually not, it's still higher, but not as significant. So we included that chart with the rates, and then it had an example of like 100,000, 200,000, et cetera, house kind of on the side. So they could see what that comparable amount would be. And then, yes, I will talk more about.
Misty, this would also be, I think, maybe an appropriate time for you to comment about that stormwater, a special assessment or assessment on the tax bill that the town does and that a similar strategy may have been utilized on the stormwater charges that was used on the property tax levy by the town. Care to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So one, the stormwater charge is combined with the sewer charge that goes on as that special charge on their tax bill. So both of those pieces will now become quarterly Fitchburg bills. And then that's where we'll do some outreach because that will change a little bit. The other piece, so similar to how the town used fund balance to officially drop their tax levy, they did the same for their stormwater and sewer charges. So it still would go up either anyway, especially on the stormwater side because of our different way of calculating it and our emphasis on stormwater management and sustainability. But that will be an extra hurdle that we'll have to make sure it's clear that that's being adjusted.
Thank you, Misty.
Alder Roda Frada, go ahead.
Misty, can you share with the Alder that information that you sent to the town of Madison?
That zoning letter?
Yeah, so to be, yeah.
I'm sure we can sum that up, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll collect that, Alder, and and send that out to the group.
Additional questions for, I guess, for Bill, possibly Misty, but she's up next as well. I'll turn the, turn it, I'll turn it back over to you, Chad.
Thank you, Bill. Misty, go ahead. Floor is yours.
Yeah, so let's continue talking about property taxes. So we aren't 100% sure that our plan is going to work, and we might need to pivot as we get closer to when tax bills go out. But currently, what the plan is, is that the county will be sending out property tax bills that still say the town of Madison on them this coming time. And the reason why it's weird is because property tax bills that go out in December, this coming December, are based on values as a 1122, which the town still existed at that point. So all of the certifications of values and all of that stuff from the DOR has been to the town. And so the city of Madison and the city of Fitchburg need to allocate that. And so the City of Madison and the City of Fitchburg need to allocate that and then combine it with the rest of our information to get our rate in this coming year. So there's a lot of more complicated manual calculations and double checks that we need to do to make sure that the tax bills that go out are going to be accurate. So that's something that we're still working through, especially the nuance with the TID in the town. There's a couple of different ways that it could be done. Still working with the DOR on how the final plan is to do it. But I included in the, the mayor's budget, we have the stats, you know, taxes on an average home, your estimated tax rate, all of that. They're still estimates, just like they are every other year. But other years, I'm usually really close in my estimates. This year, because of this town wildcard, I'm not as confident in them. So I just want to make sure that as we have that conversation next year, and as you review the budget, that because of the town, those are even more of a wildcard than normal. The one good thing is that we are going to a cloud-based software for property tax collection. So Town of Madison, current Town of Madison residents that are coming to Fitchburg, they'll get a bill from the county that says town, but they can actually make payments still at City of Fitchburg. We'll just have another login to do it on the town side. So hopefully that'll create a little bit easier process for them to mail them in. And then since we have a separate town tax bill, we'll also be able to do a separate tax insert. So we'll be able to include our normal information as well as some specific transition information. You know, that who do you call thing that Bill was just talking about? We can include election information, lots of other details on that insert, so we have another way to get communication out to the town residents. What, we already talked about utility bills, and then the only other thing I wanted to mention is the severance payments. So we have an update on that. So the total severance amount was about 1.1 million. So our 25% share of that is 276,000. The good news is the town thinks they have enough cash to make those payments on our behalf, on their own sign. So that isn't something that we'll have to absorb directly in that apportionment agreement that's being able to be accounted for by them. So that was good news. All of the town employees have done that first signature on the severance agreement that you guys approved. The cities have both signed it, and then there's one last signature that we need to wrap this up, which can't happen until the absorption occurs, and then they'll make those actual severance payments the week later. So that was another good thing to get kind of wrapped up. That was the high-level stuff. Obviously, there's a lot of other details and nuances we're working through, but those are the two things we assume are most important to the residents.
Yes, Alder Aratafraada, go ahead.
Misty, so you mentioned that, you know, that the town maybe has the fund available to cover the severance pocket payments. Have you been able to look at the bank accounts or bank statement? Do, do you have access to that? Did they are sharing that with you guys or not?
So not at this point. So the town still is in charge of their own financial information, and they'll do that stub audit when they're gone, so that all that information will get audited. Obviously, we'll see the final audit, and we'll be able to incorporate that. After the town is gone, the signer on the bank account is going to change to the City of Madison. And we have, it included in that apportionment agreement was that if they make a payment more than, I think, $5,000, they have to let me know ahead of time, and then they'll give me those monthly bank statements, so that I can make sure that things charged into that account are Town of Madison things and not other things. So not yet, but I will soon.
So the City of Madison will have access to bank account, to funds?
So, yes, because the Renee, who's the current person there, she's going to be the LTE, and she's an LTE of the City of Madison. So she'll have to go through Madison's processes as an LTE of theirs in order to do the payments that trickle in after the actual absorption.
So do you have any idea of the AP that are outstanding, or there will be outstanding at October 30?
My guess is there'll be minimal outstanding AP. Renee is very on top of that stuff. But if there is some things that, again, trickle in afterwards, she will still be working for us or combined, and then we'll be able to cut those checks out of the town bank account and then reflect it as expenses in the stub audit.
We have a question from Alder Maldonado. Go ahead.
Not a financial expert whatsoever, so I'm, they ask questions that you may have talked about that I didn't understand. Is, so is, I mean, is the goal to be like basically at zero, zero, dead zero funds by the time this all ends? And if there is debt or funds, who will that go to and how, how does that all work?
Yeah, so the T, sorry, the goal of the TID definitely is to be at zero. They weren't able to make their final Pago payment in full, and they paid it just based on the cash available. The rest of the cash that's there, they didn't have enough money to pay the severance payments, they think. There'll probably be a little bit left at the end. And whatever cash is left is going to go into the 75-25 allocation that we agreed to through that apportionment agreement. So it's kind of nice that it's kind of, they can pay the severance out of that cash, so they don't have to worry about that ongoing liability beyond the W2 issues and all of that. Sorry, excuse me. But we'll still get our share, our 25% share of whatever cash is left at the end.
And I just want to say, and also, obviously, the share of liabilities will be split 75-25, and we do anticipate that there will be some liabilities there yet.
Alder Aratafraada, you had another question? Go ahead.
Yeah, it's, Misty, it's about the inventory, okay? So how do we know that all the inventory is accounted for, okay? That, you know, if you go, they have a warehouse, and we go there and we find that there are some tools, you know, some small equipment, you know? How do we know that they are not right now selling those things? You know what I mean? So there is a gray period where they can stop doing anything, you know, because of the annexation, you know what I mean? So, I don't know, that one is my question about, I, I assume the inventory eventually, I don't know, the City of Fitchburg will look at the inventory and say, yeah, we, we want to, we want to keep it, or Madison will say, no, we don't need it, you can keep it. I don't know. What is the process there?
Exactly right. So that was outlined in the apportionment agreement as well. So on the 31st, once it becomes the two cities' property, we're going to do a walkthrough with City of Madison staff and City of Fitchburg staff, and we'll go through and we'll see what all is there, and then identify if any of the municipalities are interested in that equipment. And then we'll still obviously have to contribute the value of it as an obligation of ours in that whole apportionment at the end. But we'll be able to either take it if Madison's not interested or negotiate with them. To the question about what about the town selling stuff ahead of time? So they are able to do that. In fact, we're taking advantage of that. So the election equipment that they have right now, we want that, and we want it really soon because of the, the nearness of the election and the fifth polling location. So I actually signed off today of us purchasing all of that election equipment. We did share with the City of Madison that we were doing it, because we didn't want them to feel blindsided. And they said that as long as we were charged more than what the value of it would be under the apportionment agreement, that they didn't have a concern. And Renee is, or the Town of Madison is charging us a little bit more than what we would pay if we waited until the, till the 31st. But because of how close that election is, we didn't feel comfortable waiting. So we were paying a little bit extra than what we would have otherwise, but at least it'll be ours and ready to go. So knowing that they're doing that already, you're 100%, right, that they could be doing that for other equipment as well? And frankly, they have that right up until the end of the month.
We have a question from Alder Allen, and then we'll get back to you, Alder Aratafraada. Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, I'm going to try to ask these two questions delicately, because when I'm asking a question like this, I have a tendency not to be very delicate. There have been a number of residents, there's, there's a lot of hostility between a chunk of the town residents and the town government. And there have been a number of people who have asked me, who, who suspect that we will not be getting all the information from the town that we should be getting. So the question to you is, do you feel confident that we're going to get all of the data that we need from the town?
So I haven't run into issues so far, and we've been working very closely up until now between the town and the city and us. I'll also say that it all is being under audit, so we will have that assurance, at least from a financial perspective, that the values are reasonable based on audit procedures. And then I think it also helps that the town employee will be continuing on as an LTE. So if we continue to have questions, we will have a way to get those questions answered for us, and there's a, an obligation, because she's an LTE employee of the City of Madison. So I'm, I'm not expecting that to be an issue.
And on a slightly related note, there's also been some concern that, and I, again, people see me in the neighborhood, they come up and they say stuff. There's not a lot of specifics. So people have been concerned that maybe assets of the town, like property or money, may be disappearing and going into the hands of private individuals, who I won't name it this time. But do you believe that anything of any significance like that could be happening right now?
So obviously, I'm not in their books, so I don't know any details, but that's where the comfort of having that audit will be. So they've been audited by a reputable firm. It's actually the same auditors that we use for several years, and that same auditing firm will be doing the stub audit that's required. So I think we, we do place a lot of reliance on the accuracy of that audit. They won't necessarily catch everything, but we'll know that the audit is a reasonable assurance.
Okay. Jay, I will just comment. It's, it's obviously puts, puts us in a difficult position to try to comment on rumor and innuendo. And I'm not suspecting or asking you to publicly share that information that you've been receiving, particularly if there's not factual information behind it. But, and I'd certainly respect people's feelings and the fact that they're sharing that information with you, but it does create challenges for us to try to be responsive to those sorts of inquiries.
I understand. I, I just wanted to put the questions out there, because they've been asked of me numerous times and have a public answer, and I think Misty gave a great answer, that, you know, to the, to the best of our knowledge, everything that's supposed to be happening is happening. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know, obviously, I don't have any specifics. I don't know what's going on. All I know is people walk up to me and they say, hey, you know, you guys better make sure that blah, blah, blah isn't getting away with blah, blah, blah. And it's like, okay, well, you know, that's pretty vague.
Understood.
Well, I think that's the, the nice thing about the audit, that will expose any concerns that you may have, or those that out there may have concerns. Alder Aratafraada, you had a question earlier? Would you like to ask a question?
Misty, who is going to be doing all the year-end closing, you know, like W2, 1099s, you know, all of that? What is going to happen with the personal property taxes?
Yep, so Renee, and one of the big reasons why I wanted her to continue on as LTE is she will be taking care of all of that. So she'll be doing the end of year filings, as well as the closing of the books and working with the auditors to wrap that piece up. So she will be an LTE employee of the City of Madison. Obviously, we're responsible for a portion of that cost, and it will be really helpful having her there, because she'll still have her logins. She knows the books better than any of us will be able to figure out in a short amount of time. So I think that will work out really well. City of Madison has also, and I have also worked through what her work plan is. So we have the, the task list of all of the stuff that we're expecting her to do, and all of that is, is on there. So there's the Form C, the different, bunch of different filings we have to do. We expect her to be able to take care of all those.
And the collection of the personal property taxes, how is it going to be handled?
So that will be similar to property tax bills. So if it works how we think, this county will send out the tax bill, it'll still say the town on it, but they can make payments at the City of Fitchburg.
All right. Additional questions? All right, I see the shaking of the head, so turn it back over to Chad.
Thank you, Misty. I will work through the remaining departments who are, had their department reps who are unable to attend tonight. And I'll just pause as I move through each department in case there's any department-specific questions, and then, of course, at the end, we can talk about any other general questions you may have of me. First, I'll work through EMS. Patrick was unable to be here this evening. He shared a lot of the same information that we've already heard from our two public safety chief, chiefs that were in attendance. They have been also meeting and working behind the scenes to ensure that the 911 center has the updates programmed into the computers, so that when people call their addresses and provide their addresses, they are dispatching the appropriate emergency services. They've also been spending time with their team, obviously through responses via mutual aid and/or other significant life safety issues where they've already been responding into the town, also spending additional time familiarizing themselves with the streets and geography of the areas being attached. Anything related to EMS before I move on? Next one is going to be Economic Development. Some updates from them. Obviously, we talked earlier about the Welcome to Fitchburg Business Event that had been held at Delta Beer Lab in conjunction with the Fitchburg Chamber and Visitors Bureau. The Economic Development Department has updated the Town of Madison business list via site visits to the businesses located within the town. If I recall correctly, there are approximately 100 individual businesses within the portion of the town that's attaching to the City of Fitchburg. They've engaged in direct outreach to Quartz, Exact Sciences, Adams Outdoor Advertising, and the VFW as well, largely based upon specific questions that those particular businesses and organizations have had. We've already begun providing development assistance in collaboration with the Alexander Company on Ruta Bega and a proposed Greater Heights climbing gym and mixed-use projects. They're already in the, in the case of Ruta Bega, already under construction in the Southdale Neighborhood. And then you'll likely see some information coming forward on a climbing gym and a mixed-use building next to it that's currently working its way through the Dane County planning and zoning approval process. Fortunately, they have been consulting and collaborating with Fitchburg on this project and have been more than willing to share any comments and feedback we have regarding those projects. And the developers have also brinned into the city and met with our development team regarding those. There's been meetings with multiple developers regarding proposed uses for property that's currently vacant on the east side of Rimrock Road adjacent to Maloney Drive. They've also submitted the future Fitchburg Town of Madison address listing to the United States Postal Service so that they can update their databases. And obviously, as you've seen in the fun, fun in the park events, they've been providing some of the Fitchburg logoed swag at some of those events as well. And then, as mentioned during Bill Balky's presentation, they will be assisting Public Works with outreach on those stormwater charges for large property owners who are anticipated to see notable increases. Any questions related to Economic Development?
Oh, just briefly, tangentially related to that, but more related to planning and zoning. Are we, have we figured out how to take the existing town zoning classifications and convert them to Fitchburg classifications? Or are they going to remain as they are for now and then change at some later date?
If I may, I have a section on planning and zoning. We can talk about it then. Does that work for you?
That'd be lovely.
And how about I do this? I'll find the planning and zoning sheet and just transition right to it. How's that sound?
Perfect.
You gave me the segue, so I'll go there. All right, planning and zoning. I will talk right specifically about that rezone. Last, I'm sorry, earlier this month, we are still in September yet for a couple of days here. Actually, it might have been right towards the end of August that this letter went out to all town property owners regarding the rezoning that was taking or will be taking place. So Deanna Schmidt, our City Planning and Zoning Administrator, has taken a look at all of the current zoning designations for the town parcels, and she has begun the process of converting those town zoning parcel, or zoning designations to the zoning designation that most closely matches the current Fitchburg zoning designations. The town property owners receive those notifications, and they've been afforded with two opportunities to appear at And they've been afforded with two opportunities to appear at a public hearing. Both of those are at plan commission meetings. The first one took place at the September Plan Commission Meeting. I don't believe, and any of our plan commission members can confirm this, but I don't believe that there were any town property owners that testified at the public hearing. But I want to just confirm that. I see the mayor.
Not the testified, there's a few people there just who were interested. No one testified.
Sure.
I think the big concern that we heard is just people concerned that if they have a business, can they keep doing what they've been doing? And the answer is yes. It's not like you own a bar and we're coming saying, no, no, sorry, you got to close down your bar now. That's not the case. There are things like the self-storage facilities that do not fit any of our zoning. There's just still going to be there and they're exempt. Unfortunately, we can't force them to tear those down.
Those are typically either referred to as grandfathered, or the term I'm learning in the last year is legal nonconforming.
Yes. Nonconforming.
Yes, exactly. So there'll be another opportunity for public comment or property owner comment at the October Plan Commission Meeting. And then the request will be made for action at the city council meeting at the end of October to officially act on the zoning designations there.
So we're just going to rezone everything in the town in one fell swoop. Are there properties, are there properties in the town currently under the accounting zoning classification that require conditional use permits? And are we going to have to take action on those conditional use permits individually or as a group?
I would be surprised if there are not properties operating under some sort of conditional use permit. And much like the other statements earlier about nonconforming, we'll more than likely be looking to probably basically grandfather those conditional use permits in, at least in the interim, until there may be a reason to further evaluate those conditional use permits. But that is something I could ask Deanna to see if you'd like more information on.
Well, yeah, I presume she's going to look at that because under counties, under accounting zoning classification, for example, there may be certain things that are permitted under a conditional use permit that the comparable Pittsburgh zoning category doesn't. Because all those, all the conditional use permit options are listed in our zoning ordinance, you know, as conditional use permit options, but they may not be available. And, you know, I don't, I haven't gone through all the parcels to figure out which is which. But, and I'm sure Deanna's going to do that. But I just wonder, is that going to take place as part of the same rezoning? Or will those, because, you know, all these things require public hearings and there's notification requirements and all that. So if there's existing businesses that have conditional use permits, I don't know that we can just import those wholesale. It would seem like we probably have to take individual action on each one, but I don't know.
Yeah, I guess we haven't talked about that. In the same respect, it's not like they can come to, you know, have to get it approved by us. Say, well, we actually don't like that. So, and it might be grandfathered, which would be unfortunate. But we have not talked about that or done anything about that.
I was just jotting down some notes here. And I'll pose the question to Deanna and then share the response with council. Go ahead.
Sure. So I've heard this, and I'm assuming that the Southdale neighborhood's going to be an HNI neighborhood. So what does that mean for the HNI committee? What does that mean for the grant program? What does that mean for the role of the Neighborhood Navigator? And what does that mean for the capacity of the grant program itself?
So yes, we do intend to designate Southdale as a healthy neighborhoods initiative neighborhood, much like we have done with three other neighborhoods within the city of Pittsburgh. And that would make them eligible or that neighborhood eligible or providers within that neighborhood eligible to apply for the HNI grant. Our Neighborhood Navigator has been requested to spend time in Southdale in advance of the attachment. I'd have to clarify or confirm with Deanna as their, that person's supervisor, to what extent they've been able to spend time in Southdale already. But of course, much like the other HNI neighborhoods, the Navigator can certainly spend some time there. As you guys all know, the second Neighborhood Navigator position that we have is vacant and has been vacant for quite some time despite our efforts to fill that position. We've just been unsuccessful in finding applicants for that. As a result, those, both of those positions are funded through grant money from Dane County. And it does, in the end, with the money not being spent, it ends up getting returned back to Dane County. So we'll continue our efforts to fill the Neighborhood Navigator positions, our position. And perhaps now with the addition of Southdale neighborhood, perhaps there may be interested parties there that might be willing to come on board as a navigator.
Is there, what was I going to ask? Would that, would there be a new space on the HNI committee for somebody from that neighborhood?
I'll defer that to the council. That's a decision for the council.
I think that's probably one of the things that we'd have to look at. Either, I think you try to have odd numbers of people on these committees and you don't want 13 people on a committee. So it'd be a case of just looking at it and deciding either you're going to take away an at-large position on the committee or you could just say, you know, these three have to come from these four areas and maybe not say one from this neighborhood, one from this neighborhood. This neighborhood, there's a few ways to do that. I guess that'd be maybe something that we could get feedback from HNI committee on, how they, you know, would like to do that. And then Valerie would help us draft up the changes to that. She's still on maternity leave, but we have a few months here at least, and she'll be back by then. So I guess I would look for the HNI committee to recommend how to rearrange or make any changes. If it's just, that's how to do that, I guess. I don't know that we want to add too many more people. Plus, it's also a little bit difficult to fill these positions sometimes if you, especially if it's only have to come from these neighborhoods. So I know we run into, it hasn't been too big of a problem yet, but I could see that being a potential issue in the future. So I guess my first question just before the HNI committee, you know, how do you, how do you see making these changes? And then we'll work with Valerie to get those changes made and passed by the council.
I had a follow-up question regarding the Neighborhood Navigators. Are, what, how many, how much funding is set aside for them? And what does that equate to in terms of like hours per week? And how much do they get paid?
I'd have to double-check that. If I recall correctly, I think we receive a grant for approximately $16,000 for the Neighborhood Navigators. I don't know what their hourly rate is and what that would equate to for the number of hours. I can certainly check into that if that's something you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of if you're, you know, going to kind of activate somebody from Southdale, it would be a good opportunity to, you know, maybe actively post for that there or connect with like kind of residents in the neighborhood who've been showing up to these events we've been having to, you know, give somebody that opportunity. I'm also thinking more broadly about what committees, vacancies that we have and just making sure that we're maybe advertising that as an opportunity for residents to get involved by, you know, serving on a committee or commission, just to be able to cultivate that leadership in the, in the area.
Go ahead, Alder.
So, so I will, I'll work with staff to be sure that we put a discussion of the composition of the committee on for our November meeting. But my initial thought is right now it's a, it's a five-member committee. Well, it's, there's four people for, it's, I think it's four people from the neighborhoods and an alder. And there, I think there's a, there's a cross-representative because there's.
Yes, I am for.
There's someone from SEDA and someone from Plan Commission too, or not?
I know there's at least one at large.
Yeah, so I think we should, I absolutely think we should look at expanding the size of that committee to, to make sure that all the neighborhoods are represented. I know that's, that creates a challenge for the mayor in trying to fill these vacancies. But, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important. We've done, I want to emphasize this again. We've done a lot of work over the last year to build a lot of goodwill in the Southdale neighborhood. And I would hate to see us take a step backward by not, by not providing representation.
Wrapping up planning and zoning, obviously, I've got a couple of questions that I will pose to Deanna. And then you all acted on several items last night in regards to ward boundary creation and adopting those into city ordinances as well as updating the city boundary ordinance as well. So any other questions related to planning and zoning?
Yeah, I mean, I know we've spent a lot of time in Southdale. And we've gotten a lot of feedback back and input from residents. I'm also thinking, what are the needs of the neighborhood structurally? And how does that translate into zoning? So, I mean, I've definitely heard multiple times that it's a food desert. But I'm wondering in terms of what, and that might be an economic development question as well. What, what does the neighborhood need structurally to be able to thrive? And how can we, as a city, and as we're thinking about planning, zoning, what businesses we bring into the area can be done to, to ensure and spur that on? So that it's not a pass-through community. It's not a community that's neglected. It's not a community where people don't have the things that they, the basic things that they need. And I know there's discontent with the Town of Madison administration, but, you know, maybe there's something that we can do as a city to be able to make sure that the area has what it needs.
Yeah, very good points. And I know that there was a planning document of, I forget the official title of that, that was created for the Southdale neighborhood, I think in 2017-ish. And it might be something that the council may want to consider updating that document that the town had created to help get to the, you know, the feedback of what may be most beneficial in the neighborhood from a, a community planning perspective.
Go ahead, Jay.
Yeah, we also have the Southdale neighborhood plan that we created back in 2008 or so, 2007, 2008. And that included a lot of town residents at the time. Now, obviously, the population shifted a little bit since then. But, you know, one of, one of the things to keep in mind is that when we, when we created this dissolution agreement, none of us ever expected that the town was going to last all the way until the last day. We, we expected that the town was going to become economically unviable years ago and that the annexation was going to take place much sooner. So when we created that neighborhood plan, there were, if you haven't seen it yet, you should pull it out and take a look because we talked about all these things and the residents were talking about, what can we do to update the housing stock? And, you know, we talked about, we, there's, there's discussion in there about possibly doing redevelopment projects that would include possibly a TID to try to, to try to bring in some newer, lower-income property that would, that people could move into so they wouldn't be displaced out of their neighborhood. And we talked about the need for a grocery store. One of the, that's actually one of the little disappointments that I've had is that because this took so long, that gas station got built where it is, which the gas station itself isn't the problem. We had, but what was planned, in the plan on that site, was to be a multi-unit built, a multi-unit building that would have a convenience store in it, something akin to what QuickTrip has down by Camp Randall, where there's, you've got a QuickTrip with no gas on the ground floor of a, of a multi-unit apartment building. So we envisioned that kind of thing happening over in that neighborhood. But the desire to sell a piece of land and get some money for it kind of, kind of overrode because we didn't have jurisdiction. It was just done by the town. So our plan, even though we came up with what I thought was a really good plan, it didn't have any impact on what was done because we didn't have control over it. So I think there's still a lot of stuff in that plan that we can implement and will help the neighborhood. So we're going to have our work cut out for us over the next several years.
Just a follow-up to that. What, what is the process behind like taking that neighborhood plan, getting some robust community input from residents and actually implementing it? I mean, I, I sort of know how neighborhood plans work, but I might need a little bit of education on how it works in this case.
Well, normally, the way, the way we've done it in Pittsburgh is getting a neighborhood plan and then getting it, getting it to move forward with the, that's usually driven by a developer. There have been, there have been these two situations. The Nine Springs Neighborhood Plan, which is now uptown, and Southdale. Those were two that were driven by Pittsburgh. We decided we're going to do a plan for these neighborhoods. There's no developer coming forward yet, but we're going to do a plan to talk about what our expectations are before the developers come forward. So since we have a plan, it probably needs to be updated since it's now, you know, 10, 15 years old. But I, I think, I think what we should do sometime, probably not in 2023 because we're going to have our hands full, but maybe in 2024, is do some visioning sessions again in the neighborhood to get some resident input and get some business input as to what they would like to see there. And then, you know, ultimately, I think some of the redevelopment ideas are going to have to originate in SEDA because SEDA has, our community and economic development authority is our housing authority. And SEDA has the ability to issue revenue bonds and to go out and, and do these kinds of redevelopment projects. And they, they have the capacity to take the initiative to do it. So, but, but this is all discussion for a future time. But I, you know, I think usually it's a developer that runs the show on these things, like has happened with most of the other neighborhood plans we've done. But in this, in this situation, and maybe up in the northern section of the city in the Leopold area, the city needs to take the initiative to, to do some encouraging, to bring the developers on board, to come up with something that's going to work for the residents.
I think Jay's thoroughly covered that. And I will add it to my, my list for Deanna as well to get her thoughts on it and just kind of put it on her radar. Yeah, absolutely.
Back with you.
All right, we'll move on to assessing. Amy Mercer has mentioned that they're still working on completion of the 2022 assessment rule. And they'll begin completing their reports and then start on the 2023 process after that's complete. They are working with the Town of Madison appraisal firm that they use currently for assessing to get their assessment records for the Town of Madison. We do not have them at this point in time, but again, we hope to have those soon. And they are looking to verify with Dane County the parcel numbers for the town parcels. And the plan is to retain the parcel numbers that the county is using and only change the Department of Revenue's municipal code to the Pittsburgh municipal code to help minimize any confusion in regards to that. Once that's been finalized, what those parcel numbers and municipal code will be, they'll begin adding those parcels into our 2023 assessment rule and also be reaching out to property owners via mail to request the opportunity to view those properties for assessment and gather data. Questions related to assessing at all? Seeing none. Human Resources, obviously, a number of positions were added in the 2022 budget to address capacity and staffing needs, both for Pittsburgh as it exists today and in anticipation of the Town of Madison. They spent a considerable amount of time early this year filling those positions that were added in the 2022 budget. And will be following the 2023 budget process closely to determine what additional processes they may be doing as it relates to that. And I know also at the outreach events that Human Resources have been at, they've certainly conveyed to residents employment opportunities that are available within the city, both on a part-time LTE and full-time basis.
Just on that, on that point really quickly, have, have there been any town, current town employees who have applied for jobs? town employees who have applied for jobs with the City of Pittsburgh?
Yes, there were several police officers in 2021 that had applied for jobs. And I know that there are several employees who have accepted jobs with the City of Madison as well. Senior Center update, the Senior Center staff has attended the Town of Madison outreach events that have happened over the summer, sending at least two senior center staff. They've done a meet and greet that's scheduled for October 3rd at Novation Commons, which is a senior-based housing development in the town. They've had a marketing brochure for the Senior Center translated into Spanish. I think we may have had assistance from Alder Ratafra on that, if I heard correctly. Worked with Dane County to ensure the census data for the attaching portions of the Town of Madison are reflected in the annual funding for nutrition and case management. They're continuing to work with Newbridge Madison to obtain names of clients that will be transferred to our social workers working out of the Senior Center. Continuing to actively seek new volunteers for a Town of Madison home-delivered meal route, i.e. Meals on Wheels. And then continuing to work with Dane County to increase the transportation service hours to accommodate Town of Madison seniors. Anything related to the Senior Center at all? No? All right. Information technology, IT. Been working with the shared data analyst, as well as their IT staff, to transfer Town of Madison police records from the City of Madison to the City of Pittsburgh. Deputy Chief Leahy talked about that as well. Adjusting the GIS layers to reflect the new boundaries, to include the incoming Town of Madison area. Utilizing IT time to work behind the scenes on the configuration of Badger Tracks, which is a software application used by the Police Department for crash and citation, crash reporting and citation issuance, to include Town of Madison addresses in that software. Those are all ongoing items. And then completed items that they have already is, election has been set up for the fifth polling location in the Town of Madison. This will be, include purchasing and configuring new printer, additional laptops for voter registration, and purchasing a new bin to store and transport all of the IT commitment, equipment to and from the polling location on Election Day. And then also helping the Police Department complete their redistricting process. Again, the Deputy Chief Leahy had mentioned utilizing call-for-service population and other data points through the analysis of those districts. Yeah?
I know a few months back, we had put in a feature with our GIS where we could look at per district, kind of what demographic data is. Is that going to be updated to reflect the new part of, it'd be District 3?
Yes, we will update that, and I'll jot down a note to make sure that that's on And that was per automatic district, if I recall correctly, right? Any other IT-related questions? Misty covered her finance update. A couple of things, one thing in particular was the apportionment agreement that was discussed last night. Misty had that on her list, I know that the council approved that. I don't know, I replayed the meeting, and there didn't appear to be any questions associated. So Joe may have one now?
Yeah, I think Alder Ratafra hinted at it, but, and I've, I know I've talked with Aaron about it as well, like, what, just the boundaries around the Town of Madison, I mean, it's not just the Town of Madison and Pittsburgh, but it's also, like, in my district, in District 2, like, the blocks and everything are just really messed up, and it affects people's lives. I mean, it affects calls for service, it affects school district attendance, it just has all these unintended consequences of decisions that were probably made like 10, 15, 20, 25 years ago. Is there, has there been, what is the process for being able to fix that? Or are we just going to have, like, weird jigsaw puzzle municipal boundaries forever?
Well, those decisions probably go back more like 50 years, because obviously, there had to be a series of annexations that ultimately led to the Town of Pittsburgh incorporating into the City of Pittsburgh in 1983. So this is a longstanding issue. We have broached the subject with the City of Madison to see what level of interest they have in cleaning up the border and making it more uniform. To be frank, I don't, I don't, I don't believe there's a lot of interest there. We may at least grab some higher priority areas, in so much as, you know, the Engelhardt business that the border between the City of Madison and the City of Pittsburgh literally goes through the building, you know, and look to clean that up. We have mentioned other areas that we would like to discuss, but I think the challenge is going to be as, at least from the City of Madison's perspective, is, you know, they may not necessarily be willing to just say, okay, well, we're going to give up this property that's currently in the City of Madison in order to square off the border, and what's Pittsburgh likely to give in return? So I think, I think it's going to be challenging to really address it, how I think all of us would prefer to see it. You know, when you look at the northeast corner of the city, in particular, the Harley-Shafer area off of Rimrock, I mean, you literally have houses on the same side of the road that alternate between the City of Madison and the City of Pittsburgh, which does definitely create some confusion, so.
Raymond Road.
Yep, yep, absolutely. So the subject has been broached, we're focusing on more pressing matters related to the attachment at this point in time, and as we continue to check those off the list, we'll definitely revisit the borders, the border conversation.
I would think it would also be difficult, just looking at Google Maps, a very large commercial or industrial area, maybe off of Greenway, it's a lot of lost revenue for municipality as well. And I would imagine they would look at dollars, say, why would we give up dollars, you know, without a fight?
I'm sure that'll be a very primary consideration, considering how strapped we all are with levy limits.
Right.
To forfeit, basically, property tax revenue would be, would be pretty difficult.
Yeah. Yes, Alder?
Well, yeah, and so when, there's a number of things to keep in mind about how all this happened. When the, when the county was laid out, it was laid out into 36 square townships. And at the time, there wasn't a belt line. So some of these annexation decisions happened before the belt line existed. Like, the hotels that are on both sides of the belt line right now didn't, used to be, I mean, there didn't used to be a big eight-lane highway dividing them. So what happened is, before Pittsburgh Incorporated, the township didn't have any power to stop an annexation from happening. So once Pittsburgh Incorporated, the border got frozen where it is right now. And so at this point, changing the jurisdiction of a property isn't even at our level. What would have to happen for an individual parcel to change jurisdictions is the property owner would have to submit a, submit an annexation petition, and that would have to go through a whole legal process to get approved. But in the case of trying to clean, I mean, even if Madison and Pittsburgh agreed to switch the jurisdiction of some area to change what the border looks like, if the property owners don't agree, and they took it to court, the court's going to side with them. So that's just how Wisconsin annexation law works. So anything like that, anything like changing the boundaries, moving parcels at this juncture, because we're dealing with two cities, that would, that would have to originate with the property owners, and property owners probably don't really care what the border looks like.
Building inspection, they've, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Chad, in District 2, in the area close to the, the school, to Post, there is an apartment complex called Seminole, I don't know, Seminole Apartments, something like that? It's like a one or two blocks, but this is, belong to the City of Madison. So, so can you put that in the discussion too, to see why we are still having two blocks of apartments, you know, that belongs to the City of Madison in our city?
Are you referring to Southridge Village on Coho?
It's very close to the school, is a...
Yeah, that's about two blocks to the east of Leopold, off of Coho Street, you know, near Post and Coho, basically behind the Stop and Go, Old Stop and Go?
Yeah, correct, there.
Yeah. Yeah, so the Southridge Village complex is, I believe, owned and managed by the City of Madison's Housing Authority. And obviously, that property is in the City of Madison, it's not in the City of Pittsburgh, it just immediately abuts it. That is another area, as Alder Malinato had mentioned, that has a relatively jagged border. And if you pull up a map and take a look at it, you'll see that, you know, that carve-out of Coho is somewhat interesting.
No, but this one is more like close into Post, right? It's kind of like an island, you know what I mean? It's like surrounded by Pittsburgh.
It technically is not an island. There is, there is a portion that, of the City of Madison that extends south of the belt line, that was obviously done in one of those early annexations, that goes, excuse me, all the way down to Post Road. The whole north side of the Post Road, west of Fish Hatchery, with the exception of the Kelly Williamson mobile property, is in the City of Madison. So the jurisdictional boundary is the center of Post Road, north side is City of Madison, and then that pushes all the way, you know, north in, you know, City of Madison proper. So it does create the way in which the City of Pittsburgh was, was, kind of wraps around it to the north, where Greenway Cross and Egaman and Pike Drive all do kind of encompass that on the north side, and then the Fish Hatchery Road parcels, the Old Stop and Go, the mobile, the church property abutted on the east, and then, of course, Pittsburgh begins in earnest on the south side of Post Road. Again, it's all part of this larger conversation related to what the jaggedness of the boundary is, but that is City of Madison property within the City of Madison. Moving on to building inspection, again, they will begin their efforts, once the attachment begins, to continue to get their information out as far as who property owners can contact if they have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding building code compliance or other code compliance issues. And will be working with the fire department on inspections as well, to determine if there are any other code violations that they may need to be aware of, and doing more of a deeper assessment into the condition of housing as complaints and concerns are shared with them.
Do you know what outreach we're doing with the town residents to bring them up to speed on Pittsburgh's rent abatement ordinance?
We can certainly look to include that information in further communications.
Yeah, we should, because they need to be aware that they have recourse that they didn't have within the town.
Moving on to the last one here, which is Parks, Recreation, and Forestry. Highlights from them include that they have been finalizing their plowing responsibilities as it relates, in their case, our Parks, Forestry, and Rec Department does the plowing of bike paths and bike routes. They are evaluating ash trees in the Southdale neighborhood for potential winter removal. Southdale Park amenity improvements and assessments that will be done and included and/or already identified in the capital improvement plan. Recreation continues to look at additional ways to provide outreach activities in the Southdale neighborhood. One example that's already been offered is family movie night, moving that from Park to Park, and obviously, including the Southdale Park in that. Also looking at the community gardens that are in the Southdale neighborhood, and looking to incorporate those into our community garden program that we have here in Pittsburgh. And then also assessing the medians that are on Rimrock Road to determine if they should be added into our mowing contract or maintained by city staff. Those are the main highlights coming out of the Park Rec and Forestry Department at this time. Questions? Like, Julia has one?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Alder Ratafra.
So can we have an idea how much park dedication fees are allocated to that Southdale Park? You know, and I know that there were some, in the taxing and mental district, there were some, you know, projects. I don't know if those park dedication fee, the City of Pittsburgh collects some of them, or they went to the Town of Madison? My recollection is, when we were doing that, they have, looking at all the park dedication fee balances, it was a balance for that park, but I don't remember. So do you know, Chad, if there is any balance left?
There is balance left. I know that was for the Artisan Village project there, so I can, I'll get that information and share that with council as well, what the actual amount was from parkland, I'm sorry, park fee dedication in response to that Artisan Village development.
So that one was the only one that we're able to...
That is already City of Pittsburgh park fees, because I think there was six or eight buildings in total that were developed there. Two were in the Town of Madison, the remaining were in the City of Pittsburgh. And then obviously, I assume any park dedication fees, if the town required any, would be part of their balance sheet and identified there.
Can we, can we have that information? Can Misty take a look, if there is any, you know, balance left for that area?
Yeah, I can also pose that question to Misty, to see if she is able to see if the town has any there. And I don't know if the town actually required any parkland dedication or fee in lieu of... Question? No? Okay. Any other questions at all related to the town attachment? I think through all of the presentations by department heads, the updates that I shared on their behalf, all of the things that I had on my list of things that I thought would be of interest were certainly covered, so, but if there are anything that hasn't been covered that you all have been thinking of, by all means, let me know.
Very good. Thank you, thank you very much, Chad Brecklin, and for the Town of Madison update, and department heads. Moving on to item seven on our agenda, announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting is scheduled for October 26, 2022. Do I, I can entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you.